All right, we have 6:30, so we'll call the City of Mayor, regular city council meeting for Monday, July 26 to order. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Now, open up public comments, if there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. And seeing none, we'll close public comments, we'll move to the consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to the public hearing. So we will open the public hearing at 6:31 for the Groves Academy Project, approving the issuance and sale of an educational facilities revenue note, Series 2021, and authorizing the execution of the documents relating thereto.
All right, Mayor Dodge and Council, this evening we are holding a public hearing for the Groves Academy Project, and that's for Groves Academy located in St. Louis Park. As part of the public hearing, the city will provide a brief background on the project and information about the city's involvement. After the public hearing, the city council is being asked to consider passing Resolution 7-26-21-28 that would approve the issuance and sale of an educational facilities revenue note. That's Series 1, 2, 0, or 2021, that will authorize the execution of the documents relating thereto. So, a little bit of background, at the April 12, 2021 city council meeting, the city council moved to approve acting as the conduit for Groves Academy in St. Louis Park. It's for the refinancing of the 2014 issuance. That issuance was another time in which the City of Mayor acted as a conduit for Groves Academy. So this refinancing would be in the amount of 3 million, and then the new, there would be new financing for building improvements in the amount of 3.6 million. So, a little bit about Groves Academy, Groves Academy is located in St. Louis Park and serves a unique student base that is drawn from a very large service area. Its students are those with ADHD, dyslexia, and other learning needs. So the project would include the renovation, improvement, and equipping of Groves Academy's independent coeducational day school facilities. So, Groves Academy has asked the City of Mayor to issue bonds on behalf of the academy, and as a reminder, as I previously mentioned, the city issued, was a conduit for the academy in 2014. So we do have a conduit policy that we've reviewed in the past. Catherine Courtney of Taft LLP has been acting as a bond counsel for the issuance. She has been involved with both parties throughout the entire process and assured, has assured that there is no liability to the City of Mayor. We also did discuss previously that state and federal law does allow local governments to enter into these arrangements, to issue tax exempt obligation and loans, loans to be able to loan proceeds to nonprofit organizations to finance or refinance capital expenditures. So by doing this, it reduces borrowing costs for the entity, and in this case, that's Groves Academy. So the city will enter into a loan agreement under which we will agree, with Groves Academy, in which they will agree to pay all principal and interest on the note. And the resolution that's being considered this evening outlines the responsibilities of each party, and that includes referencing the note that I've been talking about and the agreement. So following the public hearing, the city council will discuss and consider the included resolution. First, I'm going to invite Dan Morgan with Groves Academy up to speak a little bit on behalf of Groves Academy and the project that they're doing.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dodge, Council, thanks very much for allowing us to come in this evening, we're thrilled to be here. Thanks for all the support in the past as well. So we are really excited to hopefully, with your approval, get this going. As you know, a little bit about Groves, we do work with a unique population of students, neurodiverse students who require a totally different approach to teaching kids with dyslexia, ADD, ADHD, and other learning challenges that you may or may not have heard of. Groves has been in our community in St. Louis Park for 49 years, and we're about to enter into our 50th year coming up in this following school year. And we're taking that opportunity to really have a look at our building and look at our program and all of the different things that we do. And with our facility itself, it's, used to be a public school, a public elementary school, it's been in that space for quite a long time. We are looking to create, really what I would like to say is the world's best example of a facility and environment and a location in which to educate the types of students that we see. And we see students from grades two to grades 12. So we want to have the type of facility that can follow their entire educational career and get them to the point where they are equipped and independent and ready to go off into the world and be a really functioning, happy member of society. And so that's what we're looking to get started with this process here, and it will really help us kick off sort of the first phase of what we want to do throughout the entire building. And that will then allow us to move forward over the next few years and do a total revamp of our space to have this world's best example of how to educate these kids. That's just the quick, this quick story, I'm happy to take any questions or thoughts or, or anything that I can help you understand.
Any questions from anyone?
Just curiosity, what's your enrollment now?
We are about to enter into our next school year with 279 students in our day school. So Groves actually has three components to the organization, the school, which has been around for 49 years, we also, and that has 279 students. We also have a learning center where we see over 1,000 students a year from throughout the entire community, where we do full diagnostic assessment, we do speech and language services, and we do tutoring, one-to-one tutoring, and we run a summer program. Right now, we're in the midst of summer school with 230 kids in our summer school. We also have a third component, which is called our Groves Literacy Partnerships, where we take all of the knowledge and expertise that we've built up over the last 50 years and bring it out to other schools, other teachers, and other districts in the wider community in order to really help teachers teach reading the way that it's supposed to be taught. And that, we served over 6,000 students this year, and we'll serve over 9,000 students next year with that program. So it's really designed to help us kind of spread the word, and you know, at Groves, we see students, at Groves Academy, from all over the Twin Cities, like the greater, wider Twin Cities area, including students from, you know, much further afield in Minnesota. So, you know, we really want to make sure that we capture as many students as possible.
Thank you.
You bet.
With the school, on an average, what's your student to teacher ratio?
In our lower school, which is, you know, grade two right now, maybe first grade some years up to sixth grade, it's six to one. And in our middle school, it is typically about eight to one. And in our upper school, we can go 10 to 12 to one, depending on the subject that we're teaching. You know, science, it's better to have a little bit bigger group of kids together, but no bigger than 12 in our upper school. So really small classrooms. And that's one of the things that we're trying to do, is to make sure that we can build capacity within our school to see more and more students, because right now, we're pretty close to maximum capacity.
Do the teachers follow the students through, through every year as they move through the program, or is it new teachers every year as the students come on?
Yeah, that's a great question. They actually, I've been in some situations where teachers do follow through, but at Groves typically, they don't. However, they will have a teacher who sort of acts as an advisor, and that teacher may follow them for several years throughout their program at Groves, depending on, you know, if they move from elementary to middle or middle to high school and so on. Yeah, great question.
Great.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah.
Oh.
No, we appreciate your support, absolutely. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thanks for the time, appreciate it.
Yeah, so with that, I just wanted to jump back quick, I just wanted to say that I'm recommending, again in front of you, is a resolution that I'm recommending. So, again, Resolution 7-26-21-27, I'm recommending that, and that would approve the issuance and sale of the educational facilities revenue note and allow staff to take the appropriate steps to get those documents signed and the agreement through.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come up and speak? Seeing none, and Maggie, were there any other emails or phone calls that need to be added to the record around the minutes?
There were, there were neither.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments? Hearing none, then at 6:41 PM, we will close the public hearing. And with that, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 7-26-21-28, approving the issuance and sale of an educational facilities revenue note, Series 2021, for Groves Academy Project, and authorizing the execution of the documents relating thereto.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
So Maggie, can you just explain to me what a, what the conduit, what the whole concept is?
Yeah.
I don't understand, reading the packet, it talks about like, we're not responsible, but we're borrowing the money.
Right, so I will do a quick overview. All right, so as I mentioned previously, we are able to act as a conduit to nonprofit organizations, so we are allowed, every year we're allowed to, as the City of Mayor or a city or local government entity, to issue up to $10 million in bonds. With this, we're, I think in April, we kind of discussed reviewing our projects, that we would not be, and we rarely exceed or come close to 10 million. And so whenever there is a remaining amount, or we don't foresee spending that amount of money, a nonprofit does have the ability to ask us if they can issue bonds within our authority. So in this case, Groves Academy is going to be using a portion of our 10 million. We do have our fire station this year, but we will not be exceeding 10 million, and so with that, we're able to fit both projects in without exceeding that amount. And so, really, it, the agreement that we're signing, and that's in the resolution as well, that references the agreement, it, we're merely acting and allowing them to use the funds that we're allowed to use, like, within our range, and, but they take on all the responsibility and they need to take, they pay the principal, the interest, and they are responsible for, for that payment. So it's written clearly that we're just allowing them to use that, and that, but they are responsible entirely for, for that bond that they're taking.
Okay. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's, they're kind of using our credit rating and our AA bond rating to help with that, where they'll get favorable interest rates for that, so seeing as we didn't use our 10%, we have an extra bucket there, nonprofits can come in and, and get, take advantage of that for favorable interest rates.
Yeah, we issued them one in 2014.
Yeah, I read through all of that, I just, that makes more sense to me, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. So thank you guys for coming in. That is certainly a pleasure to continue doing business with you guys.
Thank you.
It's great, great organization you guys go, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, with that, Maggie, we'll move to 7A1, Public Works' Snow Plowing and Ice Control Policy.
Mayor and Council in front of you this evening is an updated snow plowing and ice control policy for your review and approval. So as you know, snow plowing and ice control are the responsibility of the City of Mayor within the Public Works Department. It's our responsibility to control the snow and ice on city streets and designated trails upon snow events. So at the beginning of the year, as you know, Public Works will be taking, we've been planning for Public Works to take on snow plowing this year, and so since then, we've been reviewing the policy and determined that there were some updates that were needed. And so with that, we did Public Works, the Public Works Department and I have been updating the document to include more in-depth information on priorities, property damage protocol, responsibilities of homeowners, and parking and towing clarification. So, the policy also now includes a roadmap to provide a visual of the priority route, so we'll include that for residents to access on the website. And then, the Public Works Committee has also reviewed several draft versions of the document, and at this time, confident that this version presented this evening is, is the final version, and therefore recommending approval. I am also recommending approval, but before that, I'm open to any questions or comments on the policy.
Any questions or comments from Maggie, or Kyle, we have Kyle at the meeting tonight?
So, since we have such a small Public Works Department, I would hope we allow them a vacation, so what do we do if one is on vacation and we only have one? Do we have some sort of backup, or?
I think, and Kyle can maybe talk about it a little bit, but I know part of our plan has always been to have Widmer on as, as needed, or, yeah.
I guess, well, as a backup, I would say, I mean, we got a variety of local contractors and probably not take, to, if there was just one of us, we would just have them like, remove snow downtown, you know, and just do something like that. And then, whether it's Widmer, Henning Escavating, or Schneider, or whoever it is, that's probably what the plan will be if that arises, but I've never missed a snow event, so, I can just say that, so. I don't think Brian will let me drive the loader, so, but no, there's, and we got two part-time on-call guys that might be able to help out as well, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we have a formal plan set, set this fall, but...
It just said there was something in here about a 12-hour max.
Yeah, so we've, we've set some standards in there, just for safety reasons. Worst-case scenario, we do have something in there that says that we can make a, we, per our discretion, can make decisions that go against this policy if necessary, but it's more of a guideline that we would prefer our staff not to be overworked. And so, again, worst-case scenario, we would be able to extend that, but I think this provides guidance where we're hoping, I, I don't know if there's ever been a 12-hour...
It'd be for like prolonged snow events, the last couple days.
Yeah.
Probably just go out, plow for 12 hours, keep the roads open, go home, sleep, and then head back in, you know, type thing, just so we get a break. But I mean, if we're plowing for 12 hours, and it's going to take us 14 hours to finish up, we're just probably going to finish up, so.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, just being able to, Public Works Department may deviate from the policy when their judgment is...
Okay.
...the center of the city and budget.
So that would include a scenario like, say, it snowed and we got eight inches on the ground, but you guys generally start in the winter at 8 o'clock?
In the morning?
Yeah, when you start in the winter?
If it snows, we start an hour before it's done snowing.
So you'd run this red route, like, before everybody would have to get out and leave?
Yeah, the red route is the high priority street, so this is, I kind of just, in a prolonged snow event, this is, these are the streets that we're going to plow right away. Downtown isn't going to get touched, we'll go out in the MAC, we'll go out in the loader, we're going to hit the red routes.
Yep.
We're just going to open up the streets wide open. Let's say, snow quits at 8 o'clock at night, everybody's going home, they're in bed, streets are clear, we're just going to plow, and we're going to hit every street, and then go to the next street, and then not have to backtrack as much. This route, we'd have to backtrack quite a bit, but with that in mind, we'd still hit the heavy roads, just for fire protection, emergency response type thing. So, depending, timing's everything when it comes to snow. But yeah, the red routes are definitely the roads that we're going to keep open, even if it's just one pass.
Okay. And just for note, this hasn't changed, this has always been...
Well, this is kind of how we've been, been running it.
For years and years, so.
Yep, since I've been with the city, this is kind of my priority.
Yep.
So, enlighten me on, on the, it's 7th now, up and then it turns to 62, which is a township road, what's our agreement with them again? Like, where the...
Oh, like for snow plowing, or?
Yeah, how, how does that work with...
Up and field snow in there?
Yeah, is that, part of that's legally a township road, right?
It's all our road, Watertown Township maintains the gravel portion for us.
Okay.
It doesn't, we own it all the way to, there's a T there, and we own it all the way, own it all the way up to the T, down 60, down the gravel portion, but all the blacktop portions, the City of Mayor plows.
Okay. Any other questions? That'll look for a motion to approve the snow plowing and ice control policy.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Kyle's been waiting for that, for this.
With all this heat, I'm kind of looking forward to it. It'll take the 7A2, Trail Sidewalk and Road Repairs.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, throughout the summer, city staff has compiled a list of streets, sidewalks, and trails that are in need of some repair. Staff is proposing to have W.M. Mueller and Sons complete the blacktop repairs needed in the amount of $15,090. This price includes the repairs of 10 manholes, two gate valves, 17 pedestrian ramps, 10 small patches, and four larger patches that need to be ground and structures. W.M. Mueller Sons is a reliable company to work with, and the city has worked with them every year over the past over years. Staff is also proposing to have Gopher State Seal Coat to complete the cracked ceiling repairs needed in the amount of $17,840. This price includes the cracked ceiling of all blacktop sidewalks in the Hidden Creek development, all park trails, a vast majority of the roads in Hidden Creek development, and I also created a map to show these locations. Cracked ceiling helps prevent water from entering the road, which can cause significant damage during freezing and thawing periods. So kind of the breakdown, Gopher State Seal Coat, all the park trails to cracked seal is going to cost about $4,778. The sidewalk repairs for cracked ceiling in Hidden Creek is going to be $2,184. The cracked ceiling of the highlighted roads in orange there is going to be $10,878. And then the road, well, like I said, the road repairs are kind of, the pedestrian ramps, which does include some pedestrian ramps in cold water, I'll touch base on cold water a little bit. We did have a couple Public Works meetings regarding the sidewalks and everything in cold water, and we're kind of looking to put a Band-Aid on them for now and possibly do a complete reconstruct of them next year when we do mill and overlays, whether it be blacktop or concrete. So we're just kind of, kind of get by with them this year, and then hopefully next year, a vast majority of them in the cold water development will be hopefully new, so.
Yeah, there's some rough spots.
Yeah, so we, the price for W.M. Mueller and Sons does include replacing the majority of those ramps in cold water crossing, but we will reevaluate and, so that we may not do as many as we originally thought. Just, if the ones are all in okay condition, and we'll make it one more year, we're just going to leave them alone, but the ones that are really bad, we'll probably just fix up and kind of do the bare minimum, not that we lay a new blacktop and then rip it up next year. So, total cost for everything is going to be about $32,930. Street Improvement Fund, we're proposing to take the street portions of it, so that'll be about $28,152. And the Park Improvement Fund is where we're proposing to do the park trail cracked ceiling. I have my lovely map with the areas highlighted with the locations.
Any questions for Kyle? And I'll look for a motion to have Mueller and Sons complete the blacktop repairs. Look for a motion to approve Gopher State Seal Coating in the amount of $17,840 for seal cracking, and Mueller and Sons Road Repair for $15,090, for a grand total of $32,930.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion?
I just want to say, for Kyle, like, I've noticed some of his artwork on some of the manhole covers, and it looks like not a moment too soon, especially in the Hidden Creek. They were looking pretty tough, and you'd notice it when you hit it with the car. Boom!
And the snow plow.
Yeah, I can only imagine.
And like I said, this is a Band-Aid to get through, so we don't get more damage. We did talk about this quite a bit at Public Works meeting. Initially, Hidden Creek was scheduled for repairs next summer, but during the discussion, we think we'll finish off cold water crossing, just to keep that running that way, and then go the next year to Hidden Creek, so that's how we thought, we'll get these repairs done. The engineer agreed with it and thought it was a good plan on how we were working that, so we just shifted things a little bit.
Yeah, because there's some really rough spots on cold water.
Yep.
Most of those will probably still get addressed, I think I know which ones you're talking about, a couple dips and a couple...
Yeah.
Even then, it's, it's, so...
Yeah, there's like, three or four blocks that are real sketchy.
Have you walked them since I painted them up?
Yeah, I saw all your markings, I'm like, oh, they're looking at them.
Oh, yeah.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
All right, 7B1, change request for painting of the new fire station.
Okay, Mayor and Council in front of you this evening is a change request for the Mayor Fire Station for interior painting of the station in the apparatus bays. This request is coming from the Mayor Fire Relief Association to pay for the painting through a donation of $45,845. I am here to, I, I know in the past, we've gone over this several times, so I am here to answer any questions, but with that, I am recommending approval of the donation.
Any questions for Maggie? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the donation from the Mayor Fire Relief Association for $45,845 to paint the apparatus bays of the new fire station.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Andy, thank you, and if you can relay the thanks for the donation, I really appreciate it, thank you. Council reports, Councilmember Melander, anything to report on?
I will be attending the Planning Commission meeting on August 3, and for the Watertown Community Ed, I don't have a date yet on our next meeting, but I will attend as soon as I have it.
All right, we'll look forward to hearing about it at the next meeting. Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
I have the CCL meeting tomorrow morning, first one, we meet quarterly, so.
Okay. You have your introductory PowerPoint prepared?
Yeah.
Perfect.
I was told 22 minutes, is that...
Right.
Yeah, okay.
20 to 22, you're right on. All right. Councilmember McNeil, any... Councilmember McNeil, anything to report on?
No.
No, Councilmember Hill?
Uh Park Board, uh we looked at some preliminary drawings for the um pavilion um at Old Schoolhouse Park. Just kind of getting rough ideas at this point.
Where are we at with the archery? Has that, has that died now, or is that still being discussed?
It is on our priorities. Um I mean, it's on our list of priorities for the next five years. Um at this time, the Park Commission has decided that it wasn't gonna take on any more projects for twenty twenty-one, but again, still we'll probably look again in August at priorities for twenty twenty-two, so we can bring it up again at that time.
All right, I have nothing to report on at this time, so with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned.
We can jump right in.
All right, with that, then, we will call the City Council Workshop Meeting for Monday, July twenty-sixth to order.
All right, so mayor and council, uh I just have some information for you for the twenty twenty-two budget kickoff. So uh we're in July, so that's kind of the time when we start thinking about uh next year's budget. Um and so I just wanted to give you a little bit more information and then get some feedback from you as far as what should I be focusing on this year? Uh so with that, um I do have a tentative budget schedule in your packet. Um this is tentative to change, because as you know, things change and priorities. Some things take longer, some things go quicker, and so we might get through it quicker, more quickly, and some things might take a little longer. So as far as budget goals, objectives, and priorities, um so the city of mayor, uh you know, every year, we assess the community as a whole and the vision for the future. What are our goals? How are we gonna achieve those goals? Um it is important for the council and the community to, to be proactive where it can be, and I think we've been doing that. We have our uh we have our capital plans essentially already created for, for multiple departments. With that, we have our long-term financial plan that takes those capital uh plans and puts them into a five-to-six-year outlook, where we prioritize um those projects and and we're proactive in maintenance and making sure that we're not having, we're actively preventing, hopefully, any, anything from breaking down quickly and having those upfront, or those in-the-moment costs. So um again, with that my question to you is, where do you see the community going in the future? What is, what's the vision for twenty twenty-two and beyond? Um have you heard anything from the community as far as expectations? Where should we focus our resources and uh where, where do we have control and where don't we have control? So I did give some examples. I know our Park and Recs Department has been pretty proactive, and we've been doing a lot of projects in the last few years, and so we are kind of taking a break for the rest of the year as far as taking on new projects. We're just kind of working on some concept plans right now. For, uh do we want to expand communication? I know we've been working on social media, we have a newsletter, our sign. Um is there anything else you can think of that would, would allow us to reach the community? Business retention, attraction, civic engagement, creating that sense of community. Uh we are being, uh since last year, or a couple of years ago, we've been very uh proactive in our, the maintenance of our current infrastructure, and we continue to do that. Um and then also planning for future needs with future growth. So in your packet, I did put together a little PowerPoint. I won't go through it completely. It does include, again, tentative dates and timelines. Summary of our budget, so we do have our general fund budget, um that's paid through with local government aid and, and taxes, and then our utilities is the, that's our enterprise fund that that's that's paid for through um user fees. And I do go through that a little bit more in depth. Again, our budget, our budget schedule, um going through the refresher today. Um getting some ideas as far as how we want this budget to look. And then in September, as you know, we do need to, to approve our preliminary budget levy that gets sent to the council. Then we are able to continue to, to go through our budget and make changes. We cannot um raise the levy, but we can reduce the levy by, by the final approval in December. So in December, we will also have our truth and taxation public hearing that allows residents to, based on our what we've passed in September, to comment on our preliminary tax levy. Um and then provide any comment before we pass our final, but, final budget and just on that evening or on the twentieth.
So historically, what we've, what we've done on this preliminary is we as we get all the numbers together and the things we want to work on, where we're at, we typically stay on the high end of things, knowing we can you know, whittle it down some by the time we finalize it in December. Like Maggie said, we can't go up, we can only go down with it, so we have to be pretty accurate. Now, with that said, that doesn't mean if we're around forty-nine percent or want to be around fifty, we don't come in at sixty-five for a preliminary. You know, just to give us that wiggle room. We, we're within a couple percent, and then we try to do what we can do to get it at that tax rate. And then Maggie will go through later in one of the meetings, um for anyone who's interested in how we, how tax rates then, how they're affected, and what's, what's a tax capacity per household, and then how the tax rate, that forty-nine percent of what, I mean, what's forty-nine point oh nine percent of what?
Yeah, what does it mean?
Maggie will go through some of that, I'm sure, at future works.
Yep, yep, for sure.
Try to, try to get that worst case, uh and then for the preliminary, and then go from there.
So this is just kind of historical tax rate trends, so as you can see, we have been decreasing our tax rate over the last ten years, eleven years, so.
Once those gets compared to other Carver County, obviously, we don't.
Yeah, right here.
Compete well with Chaska, Chanhassen, Eastern Carver County, but as far as Western Carver County, we're really sitting good. Uh where our tax levy is in comparison.
Yeah, and.
Council and staff.
Right, yeah, and, yeah, keep in mind, too, that those, those larger cities just, they have, they tend to have more business. They tend to have more residential units to kind of spread, spread the cost, so, but again, yep, if you you can see where we fit in there. Um so general view, I just wanted to, what we do know is we do know what our debt tax levy for twenty twenty-two will be. It actually is a reduction from last year, because we are seeing a reduction in our debt sewer, service sewer that we levy for, so that's to pay, that debt service um is to help fund our, which we're allowed to do, our sewer utility. We do feel like, we, based on uh our long-term plan, that will drop off eventually, but um at this time, we still levy to keep that utility running uh in the, in the black.
We can only do that for sewer, correct?
Right.
And so as you'll see, as we, we have a long-term plan on that to eliminate it out of our tax levy and get it back, our enterprising funds should be running self-sufficient. So we've done studies, and that's where you see some of these increases. We've been doing every year a three percent increase. Based on that, we know what number we have to get to to make sewer run self-sufficient, so we don't have to levy it.
Right.
The money's still coming. We either levy it and keep rates lower, or don't levy it and rates go up a little bit, but at least then we're transparent where the money's truly going to and what it's for. So residents have a good idea what, what it's for.
Yes, and then you'll, there are, there will, will also be some of these that are falling off in the next couple of years. And as we've talked about with the fire station and our street projects, we're kind of planning um around that, so especially with the fire station, that is a lower number than we projected. We had to, we had to determine a number last year based on not having the final uh final bond payment approved, and so we did guess seventy-five, that did, that was high. And so this year, we do have that, the actual debt levy, or the actual number that we need to levy, and it is lower.
Is that interest only?
That's, uh yes, so that's interest, and then, as I mentioned, we're kind of wrapping. We were able to do interest for two, two to three years until we're able to have some other debt fall off. So it keeps our debt amount stable. So we were able, I don't know if you have any questions about that. We were, we were being strategic in that once some debt was falling off, we were adding it back on so that our, the debt portion is stable. Just, that was our way of being able to finance the new fire station essentially, and our, and our upcoming street projects, because we knew we had debt falling off, right.
I think that some of these other older bonds will be paid. So Ellers, I think it was Ellers, that came in and walked through and said, we can do two years of interest paid only on the fire station loan so that your tax impact is lower, or not as high, and then once those other bonds fall off, then we would add in the principal. And it's.
Yep, so it allows our tax rate to stay stable and allows us to, again, also fund our future street projects without our tax rate jumping significantly.
Keeps us below the debt, we can only carry so much debt.
Right.
So that keeps us below that, that threshold of what we can carry too.
Yep, so that, yeah, so that shows that it will be lower this year, but then we'll see, again, we'll have to reassess for twenty twenty-three, but I think we'll see something very similar. Um and then, again, right now, we only know our debt service levy. Our capital fund, we will review again if we're able, what money we're able to put in to those capital funds to build those up this year. Um my preliminary assessment of the general levy, I believe, is gonna be very similar to, um I don't see any real significant changes in the general levy. So um I'm expecting not a similar to twenty twenty-one final, maybe a little bit of an increase. But I just wanted to give you an idea of our historical general fund levy.
Balancing, we can do, Maggie, knowing in the next couple of years, uh that tax rate is predicted based on our, our plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh four or five percent, if I remember right, is there any way we can, we should be looking at maybe balancing that to try to bring some of that earlier?
Yeah, so what I've been looking, what I've been looking at is when we do have years like this, where I think things will come in a little bit lower, we can maybe add a little bit more in the capital to build up those funds. So then when those other, those other jumps happen, we can reduce the capital amount. So we can then, our tax rate will stay pretty consistent. So I think it's, again, that capital fund is where we can fluctuate, but I think this year would be a good year to maybe increase it, and then maybe when there's a jump later, we can reduce it. But then still have the same amount that we were planning in those funds.
Yeah, it'll be a balance, of course. I mean, again, I still, me personally, would like to still stay around the fifty percent if we can and not have, you know, big fluctuations.
Right, yeah, and I, again, it's all about um just researching priorities and kind of looking at um being strategic, so.
If we held the same, so our tax capacity is based off of one percent of your home value. You take that one percent, and then we get taxed forty-nine point nine percent of that one percent. So if we stayed the same and kept it at forty-nine point nine, taxes will likely go up, because people's prop, their values, home values are likely gonna go up some. So that's where there's some of that misconception of, oh, taxes went up, well, we didn't, we held our tax rate, but yes, they went up some, but your house value went up. You know, so that's so if you were to sell it, you would be coming out ahead on that based on what it went up, so.
Yeah, and we will get those numbers in August, kind of the market value increase that we've seen since last year. But yeah, we, we just didn't have those available yet.
I suspect they're still going up.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I'd like to stick about kind of where we're at for that number.
Yep, sounds good.
And I'd, I'd like to just know how many homes are coming on the tax bracket, because we gotta be getting close where some of those.
Yeah, so I did put, um, right now, we have ten. Um that's based on, I think, end of June. But then we do have the eighth edition of.
Well, I, I'm talking about, like, these ten homes, we won't have in our values until twenty twenty-three. So I'm curious of like.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so in August, we'll get um the
What was the?
The bill, the growth that's from the new houses that were built.
Three years ago.
Yeah. Yep, so that'll.
Thirty-one wasn't, or something?
Yeah, I believe it was, it was in the low thirties that we got, that were built. That's kind of been our average between twenty-five and thirty-five. So that'll, yeah, that'll show up in our August report. Yeah, so then, again, just going over what I said before, what are your takeaways? What are, what are um some of the challenges we're seeing, but what are, what do, what do you consider a priority? What do we want to focus on, and then are there any specific programs or services also that we wanna to focus on? Um so again, tonight is just really, um as we start, staff starts looking at our budgets. What do you want us to look at? What are the priorities? Um I'm hearing the fifty percent tax rate is kind of what we're shooting for again. Staff will, I'll be printing off the budgets for each department, and then we'll be sitting down and reviewing those. But we're open to any kind of feedback right now as, when we start that process, to make sure that we're working within council's priorities.
Any comments, any thoughts from anyone that want to start out?
No, I, I remember last year when you brought everybody's capital improvement plans and their priorities for the coming years, so that we can kind of see it, and then I agree with Mike that if we see those bigger increases coming, do you slowly start a little bit now, knowing that next year, we might have to have a bigger increase because of some of the things?
Yeah, no, and it, and.
Just talking about what you had said about moving, all that.
Yeah, just kind of being strategic and planning for those big, bigger jumps, so that we can feel confident we can, you know, reduce in some areas, then, yep.
Yeah, and continue to move forward with our, our CIPs and getting ahead on street progress and ahead of some of the fire department. Like I've said, you know, come the last couple of years now, we're finally digging out of that hole and actually getting ahead, ahead of the game, and let's continue that momentum. I would like to focus, you know, and, and again, I don't know how much this has to do with the budgeting side of things, but certainly development and getting more more lots available, so we can get back into the thirties versus the ten or twelve or fifteen we may do, and we're just running out of lots, so what it might take for these developers or where we can help. I'd like to also see what we can do for businesses, you know, knowing that this coffee shop's been talking, is there something we can do or something, you know, to help the community get that going, or, you know, that's been a while now. There's buzz about it, people are talking about it, looking forward to it, but you know, is there, and, and I don't know if the EDA can jump in and help out, what we can do, or even Carver County EDA, for that matter, but like, see what we can do to keep them, uh, or, or get them up and running as businesses come in.
Okay.
But lots are a big thing, I'd see what we can do with developers, see what we can do to get them going and.
Is the eighth edition's all we've got right now, Chris?
Um, yep, yeah, the, as far as new platted lots, yeah. I think we have like, I think we have some scattered lots, but otherwise, it's not very many. Anything else?
Those are a lot of, those are a lot of my comments. You know, and what was it, this year, we were gonna look at, did we raise water rates for twenty twenty-one? And we're gonna relook at it in twenty twenty-two, is that kind of our?
We're gonna relook at it in twenty twenty-two, so I did talk with the financial advisor uh who did our rate study, and they said they're advising that we do one more rate increase for twenty twenty-two, but then.
Third year out of the plan, or is that our fourth, that's our third year of the plan? Or fourth?
That will be our, I think we did the plan in twenty eighteen, so we did nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, it'll be our fourth. And then.
We talked about five, we talked about five.
Yeah.
But then we, I, he, they were on board with reassessing next year. They felt that that was appropriate to reassess.
I would think it is.
Yeah.
Just to get a rehandle on where we are, and I mean, everything's fluid, everything's changing, so. Okay, good.
Can we also find out potentially what's going on with the car wash and laundromat?
Oh, yeah.
Going to open them both.
And I'm glad to see quite a few work sessions, and I think it'll be valuable for the new council members who are on board, just to get them up to speed, and obviously, any questions, contact Maggie ahead of time, anything, come in if you want to sit down with an hour with her, or anything to get up to speed, but I think these work sessions.
And I liked having printouts of, of things, so I don't know if, you know, could print them out ahead of time, but then, you know, sometimes on the Ellers reports, like, make sure that the grids that show the years or whatever are all on the same page and not like flipped on the next page. That'd be awesome, like, if you can say, "Hey, Nikki, I have your printout." You can just stop up and grab it.
They can send me a, like, a working document that I can print it all on, on larger.
Helpful for me also.
Okay.
Yeah, just because I like to make notes, and then it's just easier than looking at my computer screen when it comes to the budget. I found that really helpful.
Okay.
Maggie, do you, have you heard anything on the LGA money? Is it going to be the same, more or less?
Oh, LGA, I think it's going up like maybe ten grand. So it's not significant, but it is going up.
Good. Everything I've been hearing with the state budget, that that may be, this may be a big last year, but nice, you know, who knows what will happen with state budgets, but if we see any change in that, we certainly have to get our legislators and our representatives in here and talk with them if they, if there's any talks, so keep, kind of keep your pulse, check on the pulse of that, see where LGA is going. It's hard for, for these smaller communities to compete.
And what is the LGA?
Local government aid that we get from the state. There's a, a law, a, algorithm they use, and, and for money we get from the state.
Okay.
Try to balance things out a little bit. And I think last year, what did we get, about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-five?
It's, I think it's up to like three-hundred-and-thirty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, was it the two-hundreds? That's over there, I remember.
I guess that was a couple of years ago. Good, okay. Anything else for Maggie? Maggie, do you have any other questions? Do you have anything else you need?
I don't think so.
For now, and?
Yeah, if anything comes up individually, you can reach out to me and we can sit down and, but I think, no, I think this is a good, a good start, so.
Yeah, feel free to reach out to her, really, if anyone has anything, and this is one of our biggest items coming up now for, for councils. These budgets, very important. It's one of the big, so let's make sure we're prepared.
But when you say like staff is going to go do it, right, like Kyle's going to go and put together what his priorities are, and?
Yep, so we just, we will sit down and go, we usually go based on, again, our CIPs that we've put together, like project priorities for twenty twenty-two. We'll focus on enterprise CIPs and then public works, and then fire department. So what we do is we take those and we look at what's coming up in twenty twenty-two, and if, if we want to focus on that or change it at all. And then we just also go through the trends of other, you know, minor maintenance or other operation costs and just see where we think things will come in at twenty twenty-two. So I do let public works kind of decide, well, I do some part of it, but Kyle then kind of goes through his budget too, like, how much do I think I need for sand or wood chips for the parks, and based on historical numbers, and so we're just kind of, they, the department heads, they kind of put together their preliminary stuff or priorities, and then we'll sit down and kind of talk it through, and then I kind of then put it all together to see how it all fits and if we need to make any adjustments. But then, again, I'm very much, I'm going to bring it to council, have them review it, talk about how we made those decisions, and then make any changes that the council wants to make, so. So it's kind of, yeah, staff, it, it's a lot of back and forth.
We kind of go line by line, so it's pretty, you know, we talk each line, like, okay, public works, and then here's public works, and it kind of goes through like what?
Yeah, like operations, like, again, very simple stuff. There's, how much should we spend on phones last year, or electricity, or gas, or what should we need for maintenance of the vehicles and stuff like that, just to make things.
Most of it remains pretty consistent.
Yeah, it is pretty consistent.
Unless we have equipment replacement and that sort of thing, then it kind of jumps around, but we try to be consistent between each year, not that one year we only have five grand, next year we have a hundred grand type thing, so. And we pretty much have all our CIPs, our long-term, five-year plans now for everything. Now, we've, we've invested a lot of time and money in the last four, four years, getting those set, so we have a good idea from a planning standpoint, you know. Firefighters will need to turn out gear every ten years, so we're setting aside ten or twelve thousand dollars every year for that, knowing we got to do it in ten years, so we're, we're.
Okay.
Like I said, we're finally getting out of that hole and planning ahead and getting, getting money saved for these appropriately, so, again, with a lot of work.
Yeah, and by.
Maggie, both, Kyle and the fire chief, it's, we're, we're sitting, we're in a good spot.
Yeah, and so by putting a little extra money away in different departments, then we also plan for the, kind of the long-term, and we don't have to have, so if Kyle needs, I think one thing we're talking about is eventually a public works expansion to their building, so we're putting aside maybe, we're trying to put aside a little bit money, a little bit of money each year, so that we don't do like a two-hundred-thousand-dollar, three-hundred-thousand-dollar purchase at one time. That impacts the levy significantly. So what we're doing is we're like, okay, if we can fit in within our capital budgets, fifty thousand this year to put towards that building in the future, that makes sense, so that we're not having these big dollar amount items come up, you know, in one year, so. Trying to, yeah, so.
Tools. All right, anything else to relay to Maggie?
Nope.
You've got a good starting point then?
Yep, nope, that's great, thank you.
All right, with that then, we will adjourn.